Hey, Kathy.
Hi.
We have been told that Louis Miller will not come here.
Oh, okay.
But it was just too late to cancel.
No, Kathy said she was gonna have him come, so I think, I think he's...
Coming? Well, I put a chair out there for him.
Yeah.
Have a look.
Thank you.
He's a little...
Yeah, he wasn't feeling like it, but...
Come here just a second.
When I explained about forty-eight hours, he said, he's gonna make it up. Don't, don't, don't cancel. Okay.
I didn't read out ninety-seven pages.
Hello.
Hey.
How are you?
Good.
She's amazing.
Yeah. It's amazing to watch them on the line up there before the public.
Here, would you tell them what was at six fifteen? Because I did pay attention to you told me all this on time.
Is it just the only one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Hey. How do you do?
Maybe see who's in there. And I'll copy, tell me that. Three hours.
Nine, five, ten.
So we'll, I told him...
I asked that question, did it come through?
I told him, and then, first meeting in June.
No.
I'm not gonna do one just for that.
One.
See, I can't, I can't hear it.
So they did.
Okay.
Yes. He's gonna have to go to church for a federal party. That's fine.
I would take it that, I am not.
Yes.
Yeah.
But you can't just place a call that doesn't make a lot of sense for all the citizens.
Just... I'll log you. Yeah. Because I didn't say an email about it.
Do you test well?
Um, uh-huh.
Do you test well?
Uh-huh.
Okay. No, they write the test.
Because it's open, it's a...
You got like six books. The object of the game is to know where to start.
I have to get it.
Five or six books. The object of the game is to know where to start. But the way they write the questions, it's not true. You know, they try to make you hit, they consistently make you the wrong thing. That's why I said, if you test well...
You guys, you know what else?
There are times you have to pay.
Yes.
So...
All right, guys. They take them.
I have all the people on last. Would you allow it to tell us?
All right, it's six seventeen. Let me call the order. Special Call Meeting, Granville City Council, Monday, May twenty-second, at six fifteen.
Sixteen?
Six seventeen. That's enough. All right, any citizens' comments regarding the agenda item on the special call meeting?
I'd like to make a motion. To close the public hearing and send the item back to planning and zoning.
We're not on that yet. We're not on that yet. We're on the special call meeting.
A special call meeting?
In regards to the telecommunications service agreement with Comcast.
I did not receive that.
It's, it's right in your agenda packet. And it's sitting on your desk. All right? Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
I did all of it.
Any discussion?
Only this is the first I knew about special call meeting. I didn't, I didn't even notice.
Did, did you pick up your agenda packet? It was in the agenda packet.
It was attached to the email.
Yeah?
It was, yeah. Yes, ma'am, you should have gotten it to email.
That's it, I just wanted to say I didn't receive any notice.
Okay. Any, any discussion? All right. I guess we'll move to a vote. All in favor?
This is approved in the agenda, so aye.
Right, approving agenda. All in favor of approving agenda? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, discussion. Discussion and decision on telecommunications service agreement with Comcast Enterprise Services to serve City Hall, the Police Department, Ninety-two Post Street, and three-twenty-nine Griffin Street.
I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
That we accept this?
I second it.
Any other further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we pointed out that this new contract is gonna save approximately nineteen thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighteen cents per year.
It is a five-year agreement. And just to tell you briefly what we're doing here, as you know, Comcast Enterprise Services, along with Comcast Xfinity, has deployed all throughout Granville. Here in City Hall, we need improved services. We're gonna bring a three-hundred megabyte asymmetric service circuit into the Police Department, which will vastly improve their ability to upload camera capabilities. All of this, we're gonna put a hundred megabyte circuit into the City Hall side, dividing the two networks, which I think is important. We're also bringing in a new phone system from Comcast, which would be vastly superior to what we have, also, which we don't have today, into Ninety-two Post Street. We're bringing in a fifty-thirty-five circuit with Wi-Fi capability. And into three-twenty-nine Griffin Street, a fifty-thirty-five circuit with Wi-Fi capability, because we right now don't have Wi-Fi for people who live in those places. So that is what this is all about. All right, any other discussion?
I think it's a small thing, and I won't compliment whoever had anything to do with this. Obviously, a savings and a much better service.
Thank you. As far as we're on the special call meeting. So we've already approved the agenda, we're just, any last discussion?
We have a motion, a second, we're in discussion.
We have a motion and discussion, right? All allowed to ask any questions. All right, okay. All right. All in favor of accepting this telecommunications service agreement? Signify by raising hand, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is, you're opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. The motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned from the special call meeting. All right. Call it a word? Well, I can't do it yet, gotta wait five, seven minutes.
You're good. Huh? I had to work Saturday night. I worked four o'clock Sunday mornings, I would have had...
Yesterday, twice. Well, they, they had to...
It was short, I had to work shift.
Then we played second game. That's important, so they put all in.
If you know anything about softball. Oklahoma is the number one seed, so they were on the twenty-sixth sixteen, so they're set for six.
Sir? That's okay. I was on a phone call, I had a very big conversation with somebody. I'll tell you about it later. It might be, might be kind of help to us.
She was upset. She was angry.
I think she was scared. She was right. And she was amazed, like, she don't like... It's that child, it's... She don't like... She don't want you to be afraid of it all the time. She didn't get down, and Billy was her... She was always... Mr. Mays, because she was amazed that she was into that. Yeah, like, it worked. What's that? Yeah. People, my house, I mean, you know, you know, this is... I'm sorry, not for me. It was hard, but it's... Yeah. And she doesn't play yet. She does. I'm almost everybody. When you're going to chief for five, now, see if you have more at Bella. If she's not at Bella, she's still getting back in work. If you're wearing something, you're wearing that. It's a different... If you stare at it, it's not working. But actually, George, it's still a question. It's still a doubt, but... But now, I'm doing Kelly's thinking. She is. Not, but it's still a session, but very well. Well, that's good. And I'm telling you, I said that, I'm not gonna jump shot. I'm gonna work you. Since I don't trust anyone here, that petition zero, Jones's cat. Still like that cat. I thought I showed one day. I'll do that. Six twenty-one.
All right, it's six thirty. Let the City Council of Granville meeting come to order for Monday, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Please all rise with the invocation and pledge allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day, the day of our resurrection. Give us our trespasses, we forgive those who trespass against this place. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. The dying is the king, and the power is in the Lord forever. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we give justice for all. All right, so why don't you, Mr. Grisham, go ahead and move that mic in front of you. So we can all hear. All right. Citizens' comments regarding agenda items. Ms. Cody, are you holding for the meeting, or you wanted to just address it now?
I'd throw the mayor public for the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing, yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So I would...
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Want to amend the agenda.
Okay.
I have a Juneteenth resolution I wanted to add to acknowledge the Juneteenth holiday coming up.
The spirit, we can't hear you. Please leave, pull the mic further down, speaking in the mic.
I have a Juneteenth resolution that I wanted to present for approval to establish a pop, a city holiday to celebrate the Juneteenth.
Okay, you do know we have a meeting in June prior to that?
Yes, I know, but there's some things that need to be put into place to get ready for this celebration in June. That's the first thing I wanted to, to add. I wanted to remove the financial policy to be taken up at a special meeting, because there are a lot of things in this policy that need to be discussed. And I'm thinking that a special meeting would be the appropriate place to do it. And also, at the closed session added to that, special call meeting. So that's three things I wanted to add. The resolution adopting Juneteenth holiday, remove the financial policy, and to add a closed session at a special meeting to discuss the personnel handle.
Okay, so let me ask you, I'm gonna take them one by one, because they're each gonna have to be approved, not as one whole. Do you have the details of what you want to do on the Juneteenth holiday?
I have a draft resolution already drawn up, and I have a facility use contract already written up to use the Griffin Park on June the seventeenth to celebrate Juneteenth.
Is this a city function, or is this a private function?
This contract is being submitted as a, as a private function. But it's in celebration of the Juneteenth holiday.
Okay, so if it's a private function, the city has nothing to do with it? That's, that's you just needing to sign up for a three-twenty-nine Griffin and do it as a private citizen?
That's possible, yes.
Okay, so that, that's not an agenda item, that's, that's just you taking care of getting that facility for your Juneteenth celebration.
I would like to present this resolution. I'd like to add it to the agenda. A resolution establishing Juneteenth as a city holiday and revising the city holiday schedule.
Mr. Grisham?
Let's put that on the work session in June.
Okay.
The protocol is that it goes through the work session.
Revising the agenda, asking to have an item added to the agenda? What is that for? To revise the agenda or not?
Not to revise the agenda. This is the meeting agenda that the items went through the work session. The protocol is, for the City Council, all items except emergency items are handled at the work session for discussion, at which time they come to the regular meeting for vote.
Well, let me ask you a question, just to clarify. So you said to turn Juneteenth into a citywide holiday, correct?
Yes.
Which means the city employees will get that off paid.
Yes.
Now, I, I have to ask, I don't know, is it a national holiday as well? I don't know, is it?
I think it is.
It's a federal holiday, was established a federal holiday in June of twenty twenty-one, but...
Okay.
And then, on June of twenty twenty-two, Governor Kemp signed a proclamation, designated it as a state holiday. So I'm asking to have it added to our...
And I apologize, I just, I just don't know. Is June, what day of the week is Juneteenth this year?
June, Juneteenth means June nineteenth.
What day of the week is that?
Monday.
It's a Monday.
So, I mean, do they do it like Memorial Day, or just they rotate, just keeping in on Monday?
It was always June nineteenth. It will always be June nineteenth, whatever date it falls on. But this year will fall on a Monday.
Okay, um... My recommendation is that we add it to the agenda and pass it on resolution to add another holiday to the city of Granville, which is a federal holiday.
So you say...
So make a motion to make it a resolution tonight, passed by resolution, if we make it a holiday for the city of Granville and the Granville employees. Is that your motion?
That's my motion to add a resolution.
All in favor?
Well, if you got, if you got a motion...
Add to the agenda.
You got a motion on the floor, okay.
Yes, we make a motion to add.
Our motion is to add that to the agenda.
To the agenda, that's all I'm saying. To add it to the agenda tonight. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Do I have?
Her motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So can we add that to the agenda this evening? And am I able to go ahead and add that as a point of resolution tonight?
I haven't seen that.
Or not? Or do we have to draft language on it?
I have the draft language.
Well, we'd have to add, this has to go into our code.
That's a resolution.
Right.
Not going into code.
So, so we can actually pass this to...
You can pass a resolution with one vote, that could be done tonight.
Can we add it to the agenda, please? This is at the bottom. Okay?
Okay.
Now, what was the other things?
To remove the, to remove the financial policies.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to remove the financial policies.
Do I have a second?
And to take that up as a...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Opposed. Okay, next item.
That one lost?
That lost.
Okay. Add a closed session for personnel matters. It's the third one.
So you want an executive session tonight on personnel matters? Like we did last time? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Motion fails. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Now you need a motion to adopt the agenda as revised.
Yes, sir. Do I have a motion to adopt the, adopt the agenda as revised?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of minutes, City Council regular meeting minutes, April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion to approve City Council work session meeting minutes, May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Do we need to make a motion to go into the public hearing, or do we just go to the public hearing?
You go into the public hearing.
All right. At this point, we'll go into the public hearing, Public Comments on Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, Amending the Zoning Ordinance to amend Article Four zoning districts by adding Historic Mill Village, and to amend Article Five zoning district standards permitted use of Historic Mill Village zoning tax for perks. Mr. Grisham, will you go over the rules, please?
Yes, sir. Each side has ten minutes to articulate your points for or against the ordinance. We will open the pen, open the public hearing at six forty-one. If someone is opposed to the ordinance and would like to make public comments, please come to the podium.
Proponent's first.
Pro, I, pardon me. As corrected by the city attorney, those in favor, the proponents of making a new zoning district entitled Historic Mill Village, come forward to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, I mentioned earlier that I wanted to make a motion to close the public hearing and send it back to the planning and zoning.
We're beyond that now.
When I tried to make the motion, you told me I had to...
I asked you, all the motions on the agenda that you wanted to change, and you were finished.
This public hearing has been advertised, and it has to be held in accordance with the advertisement.
All right, so all those who are in form? I didn't have anybody fill out a form?
All those opposed?
Yep. Well, maybe, anybody, all right? All right, anybody want to speak for or not? All right, I think we can move on.
Anybody want to speak against?
My name is Selma Cody, I live at two fourteen West Grantwood Road. The agenda package that is provided to the city council members tonight includes three tables. I have questions about two of those tables and a comment about, uh, and a question about one of your comments in your podcast that you made on May twelfth. In the first table, which is five point one, it says the maximum building height for this district will be thirty-five feet. Now, I'm not a builder, but I'm pretty good at doing Google researches. And according to what I've found, in the U.S., the general rule of thumb for a house is ten feet per floor. So it stands to reason that a two-story house would be at least twenty feet and a three-story house would be thirty feet or taller, depending on the pitch of the roof. So, Mr. Mayor, my question to you is, do you have plans for a multi-story building in the Mill Village?
I have no plans for anything.
I'm sorry?
She can't ask you questions.
I'm sorry?
This is a public hearing, you can make comments, it's not a question and answer session.
I thought that was included in the procedures, to address my comments to the mayor and he could respond.
It's a public hearing.
Mr. Mitchell, if I choose to respond, is that an issue?
No, I'm, look, I'm open about, I'm open, I'm transparent. I have no plans for any buildings, I'm not a builder. But I've talked to various people, example, Ms. Higgins, her house is forty feet tall. So I would imagine whether it's two or three stories...
How many stories?
It doesn't matter how many stories.
You think that would fit in the Mill Village?
I'm not a builder, something tells me that probably no one will ever build one thirty-five feet tall to begin with.
Well, I am sure that you have, that you observe the houses over there and none of them are that tall. Now, on table five point two, in your podcast on the twelfth, you stated there would be no mobile homes and no mini homes going in. This statement was confirmed by the city manager in an email response to the New York Times Herald regarding this hearing. He wrote, existing mobile homes would be grandfathered but could not be replaced with another mobile home. Your amendment ordinance adds towing devices and landing areas in table five point two under single family appearance standards. I think anyone...
It also states permanent foundation required, which mobile homes...
No, no, let me finish. I think anyone in this room knows that a towing device and a, it is needed for a mobile home. My research indicates you also need a landing space for a mobile home, which is known as a manufactured home. Both of these terms are used in our current zoning ordinance when referring to a manufactured home. Not a modular home, a manufactured home, which is the current reference, as I said, within our ordinance, and you can read it for yourself. So, if what you said on May twelfth is true, why are these two items there? You don't need them if you're gonna, if you're not gonna have a mobile home.
So, in table five point two, permanent foundation required, mobile homes do not have permanent foundations?
You're not reading the, you're not reading the ordinance. The ordinance is right here and it says under five point two, towing area number four.
No, it says towing area.
I'm sorry, landing area number four, towing device number five. When you look in the current zoning ordinance, those are the numbers that are used to refer to a manufactured home or a mobile home. So, if you're not gonna have a mobile home, why are these numbers here? Why is this even listed?
I don't even see where this sits.
I'm sorry? Was it a mistake?
I have no idea, all I'm telling you is right there in the table, they have to have permanent foundation.
That has nothing to do with a towing device and a...
It's right here.
And a landing space, you're talking about two different things.
No, I'm talking about the domicile must have a permanent foundation, mobile homes...
That is for a modular home.
That is for all?
No.
Structures in this... Well, you can argue with me about this, however, it's right here in here.
Well, if you're not looking at it right, I, I suggest you go back and read it and perhaps you made a mistake and hopefully you will correct it before the next meeting. Now, moving on. Another comment that you made in your podcast on May twelfth is somewhat back from you. You said, we have enough sewage capacity...
That is not germane to this discussion on the zoning of the historic Mill Village. And your time is up. Thank you, Ms. Cody.
No, that, that was incorrect.
Was that the other time? Okay, you have a few more minutes, I guess.
Uh, Mark Mitchell has the time.
Okay. So sewage capacity is not germane to the discussion of the...
I understand, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments for or against? We will close the public hearing at six forty-nine.
Okay. Next one.
The next public hearing, which we will open at six fifty, the purpose of this hearing will be to receive public comment on the adoption of an ordinance to make the following text amendments to the city of regular zoning ordinance, amend section fourteen point one, two, variances so as to allow variance to the sign ordinance to be granted for the maximum size of a non-business directional sign. We will open the public hearing at six fifty. Anybody in favor of the ordinance, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, anyone opposed to the ordinance, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing at six fifty-one. PM.
All right. Moving on. Decision on me act power twenty twenty-two year in settlement, yes, refund of twenty-one thousand and ninety-five dollars and approval of election to deposit to the municipal competitive trust fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, Robbie, that's curious. Decision, second reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve is updated, amending chapter two, section two dash two four, rules for regularly scheduled council meetings. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a, a comment. Uh, this section is saying that any to council, any to council persons can request one. But there's a section in the code that says that any person can put, any person, any citizen can put an item on the agenda, that's one person. Why would it be different when it comes to the council?
I'm the one suggesting we do that. Sometimes...
Mr. Mitchell, where does this state that a citizen can put something on the agenda? Where did you get that, Ms. Mary? What, can you name the place?
It's in the code.
Under what part?
The city attorney notes.
I've never looked at that.
There's a, there's a section where someone can ask to, uh, address the, uh, council, but I'm not...
To be, to put, be put on the agenda? And they have the same timeline, they have to get it in the Monday, the Monday before the meeting.
If someone can ask, they can't put an item on the agenda, but they can ask to be placed on the agenda to address a matter.
That's, yes, that's correct.
That's correct.
So why is it different when it comes to the city council? To put something on the agenda to be addressed? So if I wasn't on the city council, I could get an item put on the agenda that way?
You could, you could request to have an item put on the agenda and, of course, it would follow into the same rules.
No, she would request to address the council.
To address the council on the topic.
Oh, correct, well, then that's totally different, nothing goes on the agenda, it would be a request to address the council.
What she's referring to, I think, is section two dash twenty-four, paragraph two, which is the same section that's being revised, which says all citizens addressing the council must request to be placed on the agenda and must make this request to the clerk's office.
You are correct, so...
And that, that is, in fact, uh, one of the sections that is being revised by this ordinance to change the date or the, yes, the date by which someone has to do that.
So it's not to put something on the agenda, it is simply to request to address the council. So they can't put an item that we vote on, they can request to address the council. So it's a totally separate thing.
So they would address the council and that would be it?
That'd be it.
The decision would be made and remove on to the next item?
Correct. Any other comments, discussion? All right. All in favor? All opposed? All right. Bobby, you got that one? Decision resolution twenty twenty-three dash resolution eleven, adopting the city of Granville financial policies and procedures mandated May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion? This policy, um, I've got a bunch of questions on this policy. And it is, that's the reason why I wanted to take it off of the agenda and address it at a special meeting. I went through it page by page and some of these are in direct violation of the statutes within our municipal code. And I went through this thing page by page, things that relate to separation of responsibilities, the organizational plan, the training, the purchase order system, the credit card policy, we don't have one. Whether deposits are made once a week or, or daily, I mean, there's all kind of things. I don't know who put this policy together. And I just wanted to have it removed from the agenda so that it can be discussed in, in committee.
Well, we're past that point. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All right. All right, discussion, discussion on first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, amending the zoning ordinance to amend Article Four zoning district and boundaries by adding district historic Mill Village and amend tax for other purposes. Do I have a motion?
No motion, this is a first read.
You're right, first read.
So can we talk about it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, this is not rezoning any current property, this is strictly creating that section for future use. So if somebody comes along in the future and requests a rezoning, nothing changes automatically. This is creating a section for them to have that choice.
Correct.
So that's what I want to clarify, we're not saying everything in the Mill Village is automatically rezoned, that's not how it works.
Correct.
This is creating that opportunity. Secondly, I looked at some options, so this says eight units per acre with a lot width of fifty foot. So basically, I looked at the back street on Q Public, pulled it up. Most of those lots are almost a quarter acre, one of them's point one nine. But the lot width is only sixty foot, so they can still only put one house back on that lot. The only way that if anything happens and they had maybe three lots altogether, could they fit more than one house on a lot? Because they still have to have fifty foot of road frontage according to this ordinance. So that's what I wanted to just bring out. Even though it says eight units per acre, that doesn't mean they can cram two houses on one of those lots on the back of the village. That's what, that's what I was looking at, because that's what people are gonna think, they're gonna try to squish them in there closer together, but it still has a required lot frontage of fifty foot. So even though it states it, it kind of, it's both ways, you gotta look at it, they can't just subdivide that piece of property because there's not enough road frontage to allow that. That's just my clarification and just, I don't know if everybody got it, but it is only talking about a certain area, it's not the entire historic district, it is strictly the Mill Village and its outline on the map that was in my packet.
Correct.
I'm always saying I'd, I'd like to see the village renovated, but I wanted it to look just like it does. So with that being said, that, that, this falls in, this works for that, if, if it's, if it's depending on what, what's built there, what, how it looks, I guess could be another determinant factor, but the, the sort of the zoning goes is similar to what's there.
Because right now R twenty says one acre lot, so if something burns...
Heaven, heaven.
No.
Yes, exactly.
I just looked at today's meeting though.
Mr. Mitchell, isn't R twenty half acre lot? I'm pretty sure it was.
No, I, I'm...
I mean, if that's the case, then we got real problems.
Let's pull that up, because I pulled up meeting today and, because I was trying to look at it before I got here.
Uh, RD is, uh...
No, R twenty.
Uh, it, R twenty, uh, maximum lot area twenty thousand square feet, one acre.
Twenty thousand square feet, that's one acre?
That's what it said, twenty thousand square feet.
Fifty-three thousand, two hundred fifty square feet and an acre, so that's, that's less than half an acre.
Right.
Twenty thousand.
If it says twenty, one acre and twenty thousand, twenty thousand is almost, is half an acre, forty, four thousand is an acre.
It didn't say it's an acre.
Right, so...
Welcome to our code ordinances.
Well, I'm just saying right now, if you think about nothing, you go back on the lot sizes currently in the village.
That is correct.
Most of them are a quarter of an acre or smaller. So with that R twenty's on that it currently is, they don't meet compliance at all.
Correct.
Does it really say twenty thousand and one acre?
It does say that.
Sounds like we need to fix that.
That's, that's less than half an acre, it's over the acre.
Right. Okay.
May, may I speak? Okay. Um, a couple of things with this, I don't understand how it got back on the agenda when it was removed at the last meeting. I don't know how this ended up into being on a public hearing when it was our desire to have it go back to the planning commission for a recommendation. So that's what I, I don't understand, the process, how, how this skipped over that and why we are not getting a recommendation from the planning and zoning. All they were asking for was more information?
We're not voting on it tonight, we're gonna go all the way to the end of June before it's voted on. Planning and zoning will meet one more time in June, they must make a recommendation or... They must make a recommendation or it is an affirmative recommendation. They have 60 calendar days to do so.
So you're saying it's going back to the planning and zoning for a recommendation?
Yes, it's on their agenda.
The other question I have is to the city attorney. Did you review this public hearing notice that was in the Times, the London Times?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
I guess he wrote it, didn't he?
I did.
You did? And it says a copy of the proposed ordinance is available for public inspection?
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't it the usual process to publish that? As opposed to telling people, go to the, to the city clerk's office to read it? When you do a notice?
Our ordinance doesn't require that.
It doesn't require publication?
Publication of the ordinance.
Or the map?
The map.
Or the area you're talking about, the description?
Our, our ordinance does not require that.
Okay.
It is published on the website.
Well, it just, just, it seems proper that something this complicated and technical should go before the people who can review it and, and give a professional recommendation. When you're talking about use of land or real estate issues to bypass the planning commission, I don't think that's very wise to do that. Because that's what they specialize in doing.
And they're not being bypassed, as the mayor indicated. It's on their agenda. If you look at the zoning ordinance, particularly section 17.11-1, it says after the presentation of positions by members of the public at the public hearing at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, a recommendation from the City of Grantville staff, zoning administrator, planning commission, and any city official or building official that has comments shall be heard by the city council. Following the staff, following questions or comments by council members, a motion for action on the issue will be in order. So the process that we're following here is exactly what is laid out in your zoning ordinance in that you had a presentation of positions by members of the public tonight. At your next meeting, you'll have a planning commission recommendation and at that meeting, you'll vote?
Well, that, that, that sounds great to me. You get a recommendation of planning and zoning. That's all I was asking.
Any other discussion? All right, moving on. Discussion on first reading ordinance 2023-14, amending the zoning ordinance section 14-12, variance for maximum size of the directional sign. Discussion.
You know, this is one of those things, you're kind of opening up a can of water. We had talked about the areas, strict limitations of who could do this. I mean, it's only like government entities and churches.
The only thing to me is they've already put the sign up, so kind of-
I wasn't going to say that. I saw it.
I mean, I think it ought to be mentioned that-
Well, I, yeah. Thank you. I didn't see you. It happened that way.
The sign that started all this is already up.
Yeah.
It looks good.
It does look good. It does look good.
I understand.
It may look good, but it's not something that the ordinance allows.
Businesses can't do this. I mean, it's very restrictive and frankly, RISA is, come on guys, it's Calhoun County and its teachers. And they're getting ready to start their whole period for this. This was the only thing we had beyond this. And all we're trying to do is make it possible so that if in the future, if in the future, someone else wants to do it and is qualified to do so, they can come before planning and zoning and request it. Right now, they can't even request it. That's all we're doing.
This is just to allow them to request the variance?
Yes.
Good. That's it.
All right, any other discussion? Okay. Any other discussion?
Whose permission did they get to put the sign up? I have another question. Who told them they could put the sign up?
City manager.
Who?
City manager.
So you told them they could put the sign up before the city council said it was okay?
Correct. Because it was an emergency situation, in my opinion, that their people that were coming in, their resource people and their teachers could not locate the building.
And we're here to support Calhoun County education and teachers. Any other discussion? All right, moving on. Discussion, first reading ordinance 2023-15, to amend 5-172, alcoholic beverage license requirements, licensed product for sale, restrictions on alcohol. Just real briefly, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir, as I said at your work session, I think what we're doing here is simply making the provision in the ordinance relating to issuing licenses for sale of beer in line for consumption on premises, consistent with those for the sale of distilled spirits on premises as it relates to allowing someone out of state to hold a license. And I did make, since the work session, I did make a minor revision to address the issue that Ms. Berry brought up to make it clear that obtaining a license still requires approval by the mayor and council.
All right. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Mr. Greeshaver, announcements.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I will correct this announcement. The Senior Activity Center, our senior center, will close on both May the 24th.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I'm sorry. We have one more agenda item. The resolution to make Juneteenth a city holiday recognized, as is it is a federal holiday, for city employees to take the day off and get paid. So, do I have a motion?
Do you want me to read it, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think that states what you want, right? Right? Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a resolution establishing Juneteenth as a city holiday and revising the city holiday schedule.
Do I have a motion? Okay. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
All in favor.
You know, I just, you know, this was kind of thrown on us. So luckily, I've sit here and done some research and, you know, the post office is closed, the banks are closed. I mean, it looked like it, there's more orders on. So.
Okay. You're good?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor? That passes. All right. All right. So, let's have Mr. Greeshaver apologize for that.
Okay. No, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, for forgetting that. The Senior Activity Center, our senior center, will close this Wednesday, May the 24th, for the annual Calhoun County Pickling. And on Friday, May the 26th, for a trip to the Blue Ridge City Railroad in Blue Ridge, Georgia. And that concludes the announcements.
All right. I don't think we have any citizens comments, correct, Robbie?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Waycase?
I just thank everybody for being here and, you know. You know, I just kind of wanted to say that, you know, I just want to, I hope I make every decision up here the best thing for Grantville. I mean, that's where my heart is and, and, you know, things are going to change. We're, you know, the future looks brighter. We just want to also keep it right, you know, and I think we can do better. That's all.
Is that it?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Thank you, everybody, that was supporting me that last week at the loss of my former father-in-law, Mr. John Houston. I just want to mention him because he's the reason I'm involved in the city council at all. For the first time, he got me involved and I ran for mayor, so he was a Grantville citizen and he loved Grantville and all about the history, so he will be missed. I just want to mention that, so.
Yes, yes. Mr. Clark?
I have no comment.
Ms. Berry?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a report for the record. I thank everybody for attending this meeting. And I really appreciate the vote of the council to designate Juneteenth as a city holiday. And I'll be requesting the use of Griffin Park on Saturday, June 17th, to celebrate this new holiday. On December the 19th, 2022, Mayor Proctor, Councilman Clark, and I took an oath of office to faithfully discharge the duties which we are qualified to execute according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. During the past five months, as chair of the council administrative committee, I have been prevented from meeting to help facilitate efficiency and better service to our citizens. As a matter of fact, no public meetings have been held for the council police committee, chaired by Councilway Case, the council utility committee chaired by Mayor Pro Tim Evans, or the council's street and public works committee chaired by Councilman Clark. All four of these departments need oversight and review policies to comply with Charter section 2.09. I have a lot of questions that need answers regarding public records requests, administrative policies and procedures 27, and financial procedures 28. I have questions for our city attorney, for instance, whether Friday is considered a business day. How do you operate and evaluate an office without job descriptions? How much of the COVID-19 pandemic budget has been spent and are funds still available to address staffing issues? In historical data, the City of Grantville has operated under the council-manager form of government since 1920. This system combines the strength of an elected mayor and city council with the professional manager and staff. The manager has the authority to appoint, promote, demote, transfer, suspend, and remove all employees and direct and control their work per Charter section 3.04. My question for the city attorney, does our full-time city manager and our part-time mayor have overlapping duties in the code? Do employees report to the city manager or the mayor? In closing, I would like to propose an ordinance establishing a Grantville Charter Review Commission as soon as possible. Each council member to nominate two residents. Also, I would like to designate the following two qualified citizens of Grantville to be included in the pool of names maintained by the city clerk's office for appointment to the Grantville Board of Ethics. Ms. Ruby Hines of 81 Clarence McCambray Road, Grantville, and Ms. Sandra Latrell, 276 LaGrane Street, Grantville, Georgia. Thank you so much for your patience and attendance tonight.
All right. Mr. Mitchell?
You wish me?
No, you don't have to respond to all that. It's waste of time. Okay.
I'm happy to.
All right. Mr., you're up.
Oh.
Not you, or you have any say?
I have nothing.
Mr. Greeshaver? Ms. Hayes?
No, sir.
Okay. I want to thank all of you all for coming out. We're in a renaissance of Grantville. We're in a new time and a new age. It's time to put the petty differences of the last administration behind us. It's time to move forward. It's time to think ahead. If you never plan and you never start, it's never going to happen. And that's where we're headed. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? We adjourn.
I'm a stiff.